We do have six members present, which is a quorum, so we will proceed. We have several requests to amend the agenda. The first is to add the Economic and Community Development Committee report. That would be under Reports of Standing Committees of Council, number two. There's also a request to add a resolution expressing concern regarding the installation of the Duke Energy Central Corridor Gas Pipeline Extension Project near the city of Norwood. If approved, that would be Resolution Number Two. And then to remove, under Administration Reports, to remove the Administration Report by Mayor Williams. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I move we amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, those of July the 12th, 2016. Those were emailed to your homes and they are printed on your desk this evening. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes as I've read.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have one request to address council on agenda items, and that is with the, I will have that following the Law and Ordnance Committee report, or prior to the Law and Ordnance Committee report, because it does deal with that. So, next is the Law and Ordnance and Human Resources Committee report. Mrs. Hanahan, would you want to read that, and maybe we'll have the gentleman speak after that?
It's actually...
I'm sorry. Mrs. Stickley, it's yours. I apologize.
Yes, okay. Law, Committee Report of Law, Ordnance and Human Resources dated July 25th, 2016, to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your Committee of Law, Ordnance and Human Resources, to whom was referred the Trash Pickup Noise Ordinance, beg leave to submit the following report. We discuss timing of trash pickup and are requesting input from other council members. Please refer to the attached letter and supporting documents from the Law Department. Respectfully submitted. T.M. Stickley, Chairperson Andrew Clark, Joe Sankar.
Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the report.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? We do have Mike Nagy. Would you like to come up and address council regarding this issue? You'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
I have Mike Nagy, addresses 4947 State Route 46. Basically, I'm here to address the council about the trash ordinance. For years, I was starting out here at 4:00 a.m. with no problems, until recently. And the street that I actually got the disturbing the peace ticket on, not a resident on that street called in, it was because of the police chief had ordered the officers any rumpy trucks that he found out on the routes to ticket them. So, it just was my day to, I was out there, same time I always was. My concern about the starting at 7:00 a.m. is we're right in the middle of rush hour traffic, people's trying to get to work, schoolchildren. I don't know if you guys realize this, but I've had, I mean, those trucks, when they're loaded down can be 26 tons of trash, and a little five-year-old walks out in front of your truck, you're not going to stop very good. And 7 o'clock, between 7:00 and 8:00, I believe, is when a lot of the schools seem to be starting, or people's taking their kids to school. So, I don't want to, too little, too late, and take somebody's life because they're young, they're wandering, and my also concern is the safety of the residents. Since I've been starting at 7:00, I've had lines lined up all the way down Carthage Avenue, and people at the back of the line passing by me, or going around all the cars that are waiting behind me, and going head-on with oncoming traffic. I don't want to see one of them get hurt, or even myself get hurt. When the police and the fire trucks, they're out here, obviously. If they have the lights going, or their sirens, I mean, that's noise. We're able to actually turn our revs off on the trucks so they don't make as much noise. And other cities like Hamilton, Gulf Manor, Middletown, they actually exclude the trash pickup. And the scrappers, I mean, since the 7:00 a.m. stuff, these scrappers have cut up in every bag on, around the Xavier students, and I'm out there being blamed for all these messes that the scrappers, they're actually flipping over the cans upside down, and all this trash is going up. That's the only thing I can come up with, just, the longer it sits out, maggots get all over the cans, start stinking, so the earlier it's done, the earlier we're out of everybody's way, basically. So, that's all I have to say.
Does anyone have any questions, with Mr. Nag? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
The motion on the floor is to receive and file the committee...
I had asked to address council on this agenda item. Shouldn't I be allowed to do that? I filed a paper.
Excuse me, sir. I didn't realize that anyone had...
I gave it to the Secretary of the Clerk of Council. He was sitting there, sir.
I apologize. David Cutler, please come forward. And again, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address.
My name is David Cutler. I live at 4300 Ashland Avenue. This, in preparation for addressing you, I was reviewing the Waste Management pamphlet that I got from when I set up my Norwood Public Service Account when I bought my home in 2013. I assume it's still current. It states for residents that garbage will be picked up weekly between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And it also says that dumpsters are restricted. They're not allowed to be picked up between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So, that means they are allowed to be picked up between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. Also, special trash pickups are allowed from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. I could consider, I think perhaps it might be worth at some point for council to consider changing the hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., instead of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., as it is now. But a change beyond that, I would oppose. Remember that, you know, when you're talking about dumpsters, they may be picked up more than once a week. And some of these dumpsters, even though they're for businesses, and I assume the larger apartment buildings in Norwood have them also, they may be adjacent to residential areas. I know, for example, at the corner of Lafayette and Monroe, there's a dumpster cage for Surry Square, contains at least two dumpsters, and it faces residential, the other side of Lafayette, and on the blocks going beyond, is all residential. Single-family, some of those may be two-family, and those blocks are zoned either R3 or R2, which means if those buildings would be torn down in the future, even the new buildings would be residential. And sound carries at night, so even for places that are not right across the street, it's going to be noisy when you hear the dumpster banging against the truck as the trash falls out, at whatever time it would be if the trash pickup is exempt from the noise ordinance, 11:45 p.m. or 12:30 a.m. or 4:45 a.m. And if the, and there's a lot of, a lot of businesses that would have dumpsters, or apartment buildings, that are right near other residences, as just how Norwood is built. Residences and manufacturing and commercial are often in close proximity. It's a big noise problem, and if, it's nothing new, I mean, this was, I got this in 2013, the 7:00 a.m., the 7:00 a.m. time was in here then, I don't know if it was enforced, maybe not. It doesn't look like anything new to me. Let's see if there's anything else that I wanted to state. I guess just that, as far as the, obviously, we want schoolchildren to be safe, but even if a trash pickup were allowed to go all hours, some of it would still occur at 7:00 a.m., or when school gets out. So, you just have to be careful. I mean, what can you do? I oppose removing the trash pickup from the noise ordinance. Maybe consider 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at some point, if you think that's a good idea, but I wouldn't go beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler, and I apologize for missing that. The motion on the floor, then, is to receive and file the committee report. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Stickley.
Thanks, Madam President. I just want to go over a little bit about what was actually discussed at the Law and Ordnance Committee meeting. There were a lot of ideas discussed with regards to how we could kind of accommodate the situation. We talked about changing the hours. We talked about limiting the amount of trucks that can come out between the hours of, you know, 6:00 and 7:00 a.m., or 5:00 and 7:00 a.m., depending on what time this council so desires, if they desire to change the time pickup. We also talked about how we could not allow any type of recycling to take place during those modified hours, and still to start at 7:00 a.m., because obviously recycling is a little bit more noisier than just regular trash pickup. Pretty much, we can, we have a lot of flexibility with regards to what we can do. It's all in the contract. So, as a letter stated by Mr. Gary, we do have some options with how we can make changes, and that's kind of what this is, you know, I'm going to have a discussion about, to see what other people thought with regards to what they, you know, the timing and their ideas on the changes of the timing.
Thank you, Mrs. Stickley. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive and file the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the Economic and Community Development Committee report. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you.
Right this time.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, we have the Economic and Community Development Committee on August 8th, and, so I'll just go and read that here. So, "To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your Committee of Economic and Community Development, to whom was referred the Duke Energy Pipeline Extension and City-Owned Properties, beg leave to submit the following report. We discuss the proposed Duke Energy Central Corridor Pipeline Extension and recommend council consider a resolution opposing the construction of the pipeline. We also discuss city-owned properties and will continue to look into the properties and options to dispose of the properties to add the most value for the citizens of Norwood. Respectfully submitted. James Bonzal, Chairperson Andrew Clark, Joe Sankar, and Marilyn Hanahan."
Mr. Clark.
Move to accept the committee report.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Oh, yeah, I mean, so we'll have a resolution that will come up in just a moment, and we'll talk...
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of 2,000 tons, more or less, of salt at bulk Mr. Bonzal.
I move that we have, suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance.
Suspend the rules and have all three readings? Is that what you said?
Yes.
I can't really hear it. Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of 2,000 tons, more or less, of salt at bulk rate. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of 2,000 tons, more or less, of salt at bulk rate. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the purchase of 2,000 tons, more or less, of salt at bulk rate.
Your pleasure. Mr. Sankar.
I recommend the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is, I'm sorry, introductory reading of resolutions. The first is a resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween Trick or Treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2016. Mr. Blair.
I motion we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween Trick or Treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2016. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween Trick or Treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2016. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween Trick or Treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2016.
Mrs. Stickley.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We move on to the resolution that was added, and that's a resolution expressing concern regarding the installation of the Duke Energy Central Corridor Gas Pipeline Extension Project near the city of Norwood. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move that we have the first reading of this resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, I didn't hear Mr. Bonzal's request, but did you request, did he request to have it read in its entirety, the first reading?
So, would you amend your motion to have the first reading in its entirety?
Yes, please.
Is there any other, and Mr. Clark will accept that second.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, Duke Energy is proposing to build a 30-inch compressed natural gas transmission pipeline that's going to connect the Mason area all the way down to the Northern Corporation Line of the city of Norwood. This pipeline is Duke's plan to increase the resiliency of their natural gas network to ensure continuity of service. Thanks. So, these gas transmission pipelines, like when they're going to build, it could go, there's three different routes that they're proposing to do, to build. Two of the routes are going to, could touch the northern, like the Corporation Line of the city of Norwood. One of them would be right near Carthage Avenue, right at the city limit, and the other one would be back behind, I guess, Lyle Lane back there. And so, you know, the concern is that these pipelines, they exist across the country, but there's definitely been issues. There's, through explosions in the last six years, there's been over 30 people that have been killed from these pipelines. Again, it's very rare that they happen, but still, it's 30 people. The blast radius from a 30-inch pipeline explosion could be up to 2,000 feet. So, let's just say it goes to the top of the corporation limit, I mean, there's houses there that would definitely be in the blast radius if something were to happen. In addition, this is, this pipeline is an extension of an existing pipeline. So, we, they've already, you know, they've already built one pipeline, this is the extension of it, and there's no guarantee that there won't be another extension farther down. And if they do that, it's very likely that they would go straight through Norwood with their extension. So, you know, with all of that being said, we discussed this at the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting, and the committee has decided that we want to present to council this resolution. So, I only did the first reading for tonight because there isn't an extreme urgency on this. There is, they're still doing some planning work, and they're actually kind of redoing a little bit of their work, so we've got some time to get any additional feedback from residents that might want to provide it. So, my plan is for the next meeting to just have the second reading. But if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Stickley.
I am actually, I thank you, Madam President, I'm actually not on this committee, but I did attend the meeting, just for my own benefit, my own knowledge. And I'd just like to add that although the committee is recommending that we pass a resolution expressing concern and oppose opposition for it, when it actually comes down to it, there's a board called the Ohio Power Sitting Board that makes the final decision on whether or not it can continue through Norwood. So, it really is kind of taken out of the municipality's hands. This is just a way to express our concern over it, but if it did actually come through the city of Norwood, it would be up to the Ohio's Power City Board.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, and I appreciate councilmember Stickley, for one, being at the meeting, and also for adding that. So, one of the things that the resolution does, you know, ask for is, and we'll hear that in a minute, but it not only asks for it to stay away from Norwood, which again is, you know, kind of our objective a little bit, but it also asks for the, for Duke to kind of study other means to achieve their goals besides building this pipeline extension. I mean, we have these natural gas distribution network pipes in the ground right now. We're all getting our natural gas right now, and we've had some pretty cold winters the last couple of years. So, there's alternative ways that they can kind of go about this without having to build it. And so, some of those might just cost more, there's other considerations, so this resolution just asks them also to consider that. But ultimately, if Duke Energy decides to go forward with this, that, what Mrs. Stickley said, the Ohio Power Sitting Board is a non-political board, so they have the ultimate power, but, you know, I just very much want us to express our, you know, our concern if we do have that, to make sure that that's noted when they're making their decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Yeah, that's exactly why I'll be supporting this tonight. The amount of disruption that Duke is proposing that would bring, come to our residents, they're talking six weeks that people could be out, have a big trench on their, in their front yard, trees are going to be uprooted, they, you're not allowed to plant them back, you could plant some shrubs and things like that, but the amount of disruption that this could bring to our city, I just think would be terrible, so I'm going to be in favor of this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading of the resolution in its entirety. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
A resolution expressing concern regarding the installation of the Duke Energy Central Corridor Gas Pipeline Extension Project near the city of Norwood. Whereas, Duke Energy has proposed a 30-inch high-pressure natural gas pipeline from the Mason area to the Norwood area, called the Central Corridor Gas Pipeline Extension Project. And whereas, Duke Energy has proposed three options for the location of the natural gas pipeline, two of which will terminate at the Northern Corporation Line of the city of Norwood. And whereas, the city of Norwood is concerned about the environmental impact this project could have, as well as its impact on residents in the northern part of the city, as well as residents in surrounding communities. And whereas, this project is an extension of a previous pipeline, and there is no guarantee that the pipeline won't be extended through Norwood in the future. And whereas, the safety of Norwood citizens is a top priority for the council of the city of Norwood, and recent events in Pennsylvania demonstrate that such installations can be dangerous. And whereas, the proposed pipeline may diminish the desire to reside near the route, resulting in difficulty with selling real property, thus lowering property values. And whereas, city council finds and determines, after reviewing the limited information available to date, that it is necessary to express concern regarding the proposed pipeline. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, Hamilton County, Ohio. That's Section 1, that the council of the city of Norwood, Ohio, expresses opposition to the placement of a 30-inch natural gas pipeline through any densely populated area, and more particularly, on the Northern Corporation Line of the city of Norwood, and requests that Duke Energy and the Ohio Power Sitting Board provide a safer route selection and installation, and to explore alternative means to accomplish the goal of the pipeline extension. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be directed to the Duke Energy Ohio Government and Regulatory Affairs Department, Duke Energy Ohio's Natural Gas Project Management Office, and the Ohio Power Sitting Board. Section 3, that a copy of this resolution be posted in accordance with Section 731.25 of the Ohio Revised Code, and that copies be distributed to all news media within the area.
Thank you. Move on to administration reports. Mr. Stiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Every year about this time, I try to present a mid-year report after the closeout of June and the first six months of the year, to try to get an idea of financially where the city sits, and what our projections will be for the rest of the year. There's been several concerning factors, as well as a lot of discussion, both in Finance Committee and on council floor, and in the community about the financial state of the city, so I wanted to address a few issues that I've heard that have come up. First of all, the auditor's job. What is my job? It's to audit and report the finances of the city. We project the estimated revenue, and we take the appropriations, the budget passed by council, and using that, match those to invoices, and when there is appropriations and cash available, write checks to pay the bills. Whether that be for things related to payroll or to vendors, those two things have to exist. This year, we've been very tight on cash. We talked about it last year. With this council, we've talked about it this year. Multiple letters have been sent, multiple discussions have been made, but we knew this was going to be tough, that we were going to run out of cash before we met all of the obligations for the year, whether that be payroll, or vendors, or anything else, and the beginning of next year is going to have to be spent catching up. Part of that is entering the year with a negative balance at the beginning of the year from overspending last year. Another part of that has to do with a $1.5 million in bond payment that had to be made this year, but the good news is, that'll only be about $300,000 a year for the next five years. There are other expenses that come up this year, which are also one-time or a two-year cycle that are going to drop off for next year, but we knew 2016 was going to be one of our worst years, and July is always the worst. That's the middle of the year, a lot of things pop up, and that is a trough in our revenue. This year, we were also faced with a situation where there are not 26 payrolls, but because of the cycle of being paid every two weeks, there will be 27 payrolls throughout the year. That, combined with the expenses related to health care, mean that the majority of our payroll keys are woefully underfunded. That means other areas that were funded at the beginning of the year, in the payroll, in the budget, will not have cash to pay on time, because that cash is going to pay our bi-weekly payroll and our insurance. That makes for a very tight year. I've been asked some questions, and I see some questions, and I've been emailing a question, and these are pretty basic. Where is the city's money? Because, let's face it, you can go, you can ask a treasurer, he'll tell you, you've got $11 million in the bank. So, why aren't we paying bills? Well, first part of that is, where is the money... where is the money spent? All of that is available online, a couple clicks away. I've got it on my phone right in front. Whether you like looking at pie charts to see where the money of the city goes, or you want to get down line by line, it's there. You want to know how much my office spent on office supplies over the past 10 years compared side by side? It's there. There's even a sheet that you can download that tell you what all the numbers are, what all the keys are. You want to know what the budget is this year? It's two clicks away. Go to norwoodauditor.com. There's a line there that talks about the budget. Hit that, or at the top, go to current year, click on it, hit that PDF and read it, because it's the documents that are sitting right here that I bring every month. What happens to all that $11 million in the bank? Well, it's in two, two pages. Actually, three, because this is the bank report. It's online, norwoodauditor.com. Just click on the big red thing that says, "Where is the city's money?" You'll see it. Here, at the bottom, it says, "The city's ending bank balance is $11,545,714 at the end of July." The next thing, which is actually above it if you're looking online, is the statement of cash position. This is generated even on a daily basis, but the one you see is the monthly closeout from July 31. And it shows every fund with, it's all its cash. It shows the revenue that's come into that fund, it shows the expenses that go out of it, and it shows how much it started with. And if you look all the way at the bottom, the total of all of the funds that the city has and is responsible for, you'll see the balance is $11,545,714, matching exactly penny for penny the money that's in the bank account. Just asking the treasurer what's in the bank account is just a piece of, a piece of information. It is not the full picture. Because some of that money is your water bill. Some of that money is your trash bill. Some of that money is health department grants that pay for services around this city. Some of it's street funds that can only be used for the street. The reason the city has funds like this is because we have, by law, revenue that is segregated, or specifically earmarked for a specific source cannot be mixed in with the general fund money. You can't use it like you can in other areas in the general fund. If you look at those two things online, you'll see they balance. And you can look at what the balance is in each fund, and how much was carried over in the general fund, which is the largest fund that pays for the majority of the city's services. There's no hidden money in the city. There's nowhere to hide it. I hear rumors and talk about, well, there's money hidden somewhere. No, it balances. It's all there. Each fund, accurately accounted, every month, it's all there. Now, some people want me to raid a fund. They say, you know what? You owe this department some money. You owe these people some money. Why don't you take it from these other funds? Because, you know what? That's been done in the past in other cities. It's not right. Should I take the money that you paid for your water bill as a citizen and use that to pay an invoice for something else from the general fund, and not pay for your water to the city of Cincinnati? Should I not pay for your trash pickup? No, because the law says that is segregated money, and I can't use it for those things. In cases in the past, when that has been done in other municipalities, and many, many, many years ago in this municipality, it had to be paid back by the end of the year. And I'm telling you, there's not enough money to pay that back for the end of the year, and I'm not raiding other funds to pay the money for the general fund. Mainly because I don't want to go to jail. Because that would not be legal. Information, or a lot of stuff that's been talked about, the auditor finding money for purchases from a department that was asking for additional money, that is an inaccurate statement. No money's been found. The money's always been there in the budget. It's always been there and aligned. It was the belief and the understanding of this office and the council and Finance Committee, that a department came and asked for additional money to make purchases, that while they were very important, we did not have additional money and additional appropriations to add to it. After that meeting, when it was noted, that wait, there are appropriations, there is money in their budget that they could use now, a letter was sent saying that. And that is, because we have to point out the truth. We don't hide things. If we see these things, we must reveal them. And any of you can see all of this by looking at the website. Who audits the auditor? Because it's great that I have all this information on the website, that I've got all of these reports here in front of me. But honestly, who looks at what I put out? Who reads all of this stuff? And at the end of the year, when we spend, spend six months of the next year preparing those reports, it's because every year, the state comes in and audits our books. They look at what my office reports, and they say, are you reporting this accurately? Do you balance with the treasurer's office? Are you being honest and accurate with the information that you're reporting? We win awards for how accurate it is. This happens every year. It's happening right now. The 2015 audit has just been uploaded to the state after the outside auditing firm came in and made their opinions. They're reviewing it now. There'll be some subtle changes to it, and it'll be published and be able to be read at any time, once it's published by the state. You want to know what the audits are for the previous years? I can tell you where you can see them, norwoodauditor.com. It's a great website. Just look and click on the front page where it says, "Who audits the auditor?" And you can read all this information, showing that everything that we're doing, at least from the standpoint of meeting illegal requirements of reporting, is accurate. That is the auditor of state, state auditor. Now, we have another level of audit that goes on with the local government services, because in case people remember, we are still in fiscal watch. We've been in fiscal watch for 10, 12 years, longer than I've been here. And the local government services branch of the state auditor watches us and sees, basically gives us some other level of oversight. Based on the request of a member of council, I talked to them a few weeks ago about the idea of performing another performance audit for the city. The last performance audit was performed in 2006, when we entered fiscal watch, or the year after we entered fiscal watch. That performance audit said things like, you guys spend too much money here and not enough there. You need to cut this department, cut that department, outsource these things. And that was published, and can be read by anyone, either on the auditor's website, Auditor of State, or on norwoodauditor.com. You can download it and read it. The city followed a few things there, but not the majority of what was recommended. So, I asked them about performing another performance audit. Where are we in 2016? What would the state recommend that we do in changing how we do business as a city? Where would the cuts be made to balance our budget? And a meeting will follow up next week where we'll talk further about that. The thing that they did say they would do is perform a fiscal analysis. So, next week, we're going to meet with the auditor of state, and they're going to perform a fiscal analysis looking at the current financial state of the city. This will not be an analysis of each department, where they compare it to other cities, and see where they think we have too many people, and where we have too few, and where our services go beyond where they feel they should be, and where we are not meeting the services we should. That is a performance audit, and it is a detailed thing that takes many, many months that the state can perform. And we're trying to see if they would do it, or at least how much they would charge us for it. Because all of these auditing things, they don't do this for free. We pay them. So, they're going to look at a fiscal analysis, and the biggest thing that concerns them now is our police and fire pension fund, and where we are on payments to that. Because we did fall behind on that, because when I say we ended last year in the negative, that meant there were bills that didn't get paid. Guess what one was? There were a couple. The two big ones, police and fire pension. The next big one, the C-9 trust. Those are the two biggest ones we owe right now. The state's going to look at this and say, not only where we are financially, but are we at risk for going to fiscal emergency? Because they care about two things right now. They care about paying back the pension fund, which we have a payback plan, and we've worked with the pension fund, and we've got it all mapped out, and we're making payments on it, and we're going to be caught up next year. And they agreed to it, the police and fire pension fund, and Finance Committee agreed to it. They care about that, and making sure that that's in writing, and that we're making the payments. And they care that we do not go into fiscal emergency. Fiscal emergency is bankruptcy. That's when the state comes in and locks everyone who's department head, and council, and the administration in a room, and says, figure this out. And then you start cutting things. Something's out of contract supposedly. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know how that works. But they would make recommendations, but it would be the city council's responsibility if you're doing that. Now, some people think that's a great idea, but I think a lot of services that you have here in the city would go away, things that we rely on. Good or bad, it's hard to say. We won't reach that threshold for fiscal emergency. The threshold for us at this time is to miss a bond payment, which we haven't done, or to be 30 days late on a payroll. Not bonus pay, clothing allowance, but 30 days on a regular payroll that we have to be behind. That's what they care about. That's what that fiscal analysis is going to look at. And when it's done, we'll present it, and you'll be able to all, all look at it. All that being said, we did bring up the subject of the C-9 trust and the retirees' healthcare, because this is a concern. It's one of, when we talk about the C-9 trust, that is one portion of the picture of the retirees' healthcare, the health benefits that we pay for our retirees. We should be paying about $500,000 a year for healthcare costs for our retirees, on top of what their pension or Medicare, or their state plans offer. On top of that, for further out-of-pocket expenses, the C-9 trust should pay about $360,000 a year to those retirees. So, over $800,000 a year that we should be paying. We're not paying that full amount, because we don't have it to pay into the C-9 trust. We are paying the insurance cost, which is through a company named Benevation, that carries, basically think of it as a Medicare Part B, one of those gap insurance plans. Everything that's not covered under Medicare or the state's insurance, we have a gap insurance plan that picks that up. We pay about $28,000 a month in premiums for that, for the retirees. On top of that, we are a self-insured plan, meaning that Benevation, this company that runs this plan for us, gets bills from doctors that weren't covered by the first-tier insurance and the second-tier insurance that we pay $28,000 a month for. And then those bills, we pay for. Some employees, some retirees, because of their agreements, also have their medication paid for. So, we just get a bill directly from CVS that we have to pay every month. Those things are being paid. Because if we don't pay them, then we're in violation of being a self-insured plan, and all that insurance goes away. And just because we're not putting cash into the C-9 trust, because we don't have the cash to put in there, doesn't mean that they're not getting benefits, and that we're not paying a significant amount every month, or not that we're going to get caught up on that. And we're going to get, we have an idea of how to pay that back, but we've got to get this pension plan paid up first. And we've got to get our current employees paid up, for all the bonus pay and all the extra things. Then we've got to get, and mixed in with that, I shouldn't say then, but we also have to get all of our vendors paid, because we owe people money, and we got to pay it. So, it breaks down to a priority of what to pay, and the C-9 trust has notoriously fallen at the bottom of that stack. But it doesn't mean we're ignoring the retirees, because we are paying a lot of money every month to help with their healthcare. There have been comments that I am against the C-9 trust, because of comments that I've made. I'll make those same comments now, the ones I've been making for years. I think it's wrong to promise somebody you're going to pay for something when you know you can't do it. That means if we can't pay it, it's time to stand up and start discussions and go, we can't afford this. We just can't. We'd love to. We've got big hearts. We'd love to, we'd love to be able to carry this. But I mean, honestly, telling people we're going to keep paying things when I'm saying there's no cash for it, and then the response being, well, the money's hidden somewhere magically. I'm telling you, it's not there. So, I do have discussions with people from the retirees' healthcare and from the C-9 trust, and one of their main people has my cellphone, and we talk every few months. And we're very honest with each other. And in talking to them today, they said they really would like a group of their people to sit down with members of council and discuss this. And so, I did say to them today, I would relay that message. Cash flow, I promise this is the last area. When it comes down to it, this year, the city cannot afford its current contracts, its retirees' health benefits, healthcare costs, pension and payroll, and our debt. Now, the debt is an interesting thing, because we had to just pay $1.5 million, and everyone goes, what was that for? Go back to 1996. That's the first time this debt was structured. The city borrowed money to pay people. It borrowed money to pay debts. So, when we paid all that money now, guess what? You're paying somebody from 1996. Restructured in 2003, restructured in 2006. I started in 2008. These bonds will finally be paid off in 2021. But the annual payments now have gotten down to about $300,000, not the $1.5 million that we had to pay this year. In looking at this, you know, we've got a lot of bills that we owe vendors, and we've had a lot of vendors cut us off. Every finance meeting, we present a document that shows every vendor and every dollar, including C-9 trust and retirees' healthcare and police and fire pension, the dates that each invoice was there. And we look at this. And then we look at, what are we going to, [beep]. Sorry. Then we look at what are we going to pay. And we look first at insurance for our current employees, their healthcare, right? $230,000 a month, paid 100%. Then we say, well, we got to pay the employees pay, including overtime, including workers' comp. Their pay, though, is roughly $835,000 a month. And then we've got to pay the police and fire pension what we promised them, $200,000 a month. And we're going to pay about $28,000 a month for the insurance for the retirees' healthcare. Now, if you're adding this up, you're going to notice you're about $1.3 million. On a good month, we bring in about $1.4 million. On a bad one, it's less than that. So, when things pop up and we can't pay them, there are certain things that are going to get paid. Now, we take the list of all of the invoices, all of the outstanding bills, the Finance Committee, and they look at it, and they say, pay this, 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 and this, in this order. Just yesterday, we were able to pay 70, around $76,000 in outstanding invoices, bringing everybody to within 90 days late. Hopefully, later this month, we'll pay about another $73,000 to our vendors, to bring all of them to between, right around 60 days. Because right now, we're about 90, we're between 60 and 90. How much it will take to get everybody up to 60 is going to take about another $75, $76,000. I'm hoping that we have enough revenue this month, and later in the month, we can issue another batch of checks like that, because it's not fair for departments to buy things from a, from a vendor, the vendor to deliver the item, and for the city to not pay them for that item. But if your priority is going to be healthcare, payroll, pension, you're only going to have a little bit left to pay everything else. So, whose fault is it? You're going to get a lot of people pointing fingers at the auditor's office, at the mayor's office, at council. This isn't a surprise. This has been coming. This has been talked This has been talked about repeatedly and we knew it was going to be tough and right now is as tough as it gets. There is a way out of this, but it takes not buying anything new. It takes taking all of our extra revenue and paying what we owe for the next year. And a year from now, when we're caught up with the police and fire pension, we take that extra money, we roll it to the C-9 trust. And along the way, we're paying any extra money we can scrape up to get our vendors caught up. But that amount that we're spending on a regular basis has to drop because we're spending more than we make. Why didn't people know this? It's been published, it's been out there, there's been meetings. The auditor's report, which is done at the end of every year and comes out in January for the past three years, has shown that we've spent more than we made and that we had a rising level of, I wouldn't even call it debt, but invoices that we have to pay. And that's where the C-9 trust and the police and fire pension fell behind. It's been published and I've talked, just as long as I'm talking tonight, every January, save. You can find it online, you know where to go. There's been letters warning of this discussion and frankly, there was a tax budget. Every June, a tax budget is produced and that shows how much we actually spent the previous year. It shows what our projections are for the current year and it shows what our projections are for the following year. That document is available online, available in the clerk's office and available in the auditor's office, at least for two weeks before a public hearing, which is posted in the newspaper, asking citizens, department heads, anybody else who wants to come to come and look at this and address this and talk about it. It showed a significant deficit, that we were going to be short. We're talking about almost $2 million short this year that we can't pay things that we owe, including the pension and the C-9 trust and all these other things. Next year, it shows we're going to be short about $800,000. And as we carry that forward, not in the published document, but in our documents, we show we'll be getting caught up by the end of 2018 to where then we'll have money to buy new things. This is all talking about the general fund. So, I didn't see a lot, I saw one person come up and talk at that meeting. Everybody in this room, next June, please come. Come to my office, I'll explain it all to you. For all the, all the times I heard from other people, "People are saying this, people are saying that," I had one email from one citizen, "Come to me with detailed questions about the city's finances." I responded that night in detail and further a few days later with information that I had to go and look up. Any of you can ask anybody. If you call my office and I'm not there, because elected officials are all part-time individuals and we have jobs outside the city, you can leave a message, I will call you back. If any of you want to come in and look in more detail at any item on the budget or if you're confused on the information that's available on my website, I am thrilled to sit down and if you can't tell, I like to talk about this stuff. I'm happy to do this. But when it comes down to it, we're short this year. It hurts. It's painful, we knew it was coming. Next year, there are some big things that we don't have to pay. Our bond payments, $1.2 million less than it was this year. Our tax refunds for a plan that was negotiated with a business who left, $240,000 a year we don't have to pay next year. New revenue coming in. But all that extra money has to go to pay the things we're behind on right now. A year from now, we'll be looking a lot better. A year from now, we'll be close to digging our way out of the hole. 18 months from now, we'll be pretty close to being caught up. That's all I have. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Any council members have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank the auditor. Anytime I've called, your staff, you've been extremely helpful in providing information. Yeah, sorry. I just want to thank the auditor because anytime that the auditor has, anytime I've had questions, had issues, his staff has been extremely helpful, they're one of the friendliest staff I feel like in the whole city. And so I just want to express my appreciation for that and also express my appreciation for the website because it is very easy to get that information now, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Any other comments from council?
Thank you, Mr. Stif. We'll move on to other requests to address council and we will take them in the order in which they were received. The first is Ken Crawford. If you'll come forward, give us your address and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Can you hear in the back? My name is Ken Crawford, I live at 2362 Glen Side Avenue. You know, I want to tell you guys a story from the other day when I was at the Creamy Whip with the kids. There was a little girl getting ice cream in her family and she walked up and she said, "Mr. Crawford, I want to thank you for putting the stuff out there that you put out there because I don't think we were going to get paid if it wouldn't have been out there." There's another young lady that I know that ran a program in our community center who was never paid for her services last year. It is true that you can look at the documents on the auditor's site and see how things are appropriated, but that is simply not all of the case, it's not all of the story. Money does not appropriate itself, promises are not made by themselves and votes are not cast by ghosts. As the auditor said, we've been on fiscal watch for 12 years. I don't know in what line of business, other than government, where you can be 18 months behind on your bills and keep your home. These are decisions made by people. And many of the people in this room, I know you, some of you better than others, some of you not so much. But the fact of the matter is, it's pretty clear we don't know what we're voting on or we're talking about agreements in the past as though they just happened by themselves. I got to tell you, I watch these meetings. I have never seen such finger pointing, ducking, rolling people under the bus. We talk about a budget. Who writes the budget? The person who should be writing the budget is the person who should be running the department, then brought forward to council to pass or approve it. You cannot pass something called a tax budget in June when you say during the meetings that this is our best guess, this is our best projections, and then every other council meeting, you pass emergency appropriations on the spot. Folks, that isn't a budget. That's not a plan. That's what's missing here. The other part of what's missing here is communication. Where is the person responsible for managing these departments and how is the outreach done? Jim, your website's great, but if folks don't read it, it doesn't serve a purpose. I was a school teacher, okay? I taught juvenile delinquents for seven years that were incarcerated. If someone came into me and said, "Mr. Crawford, I don't understand what you're saying," it's my duty to communicate with them in a way that it makes sense. What these meetings have become is an echo chamber where the same 12 to 15 people talk to each other about the things that happened in the past and not about what they're going to do tomorrow. If we've had performance audits or we're going to have another performance audit, that's great. Transparency is the point in all of this. And we should be taking further steps to educate our residents and continue to be transparent. But at the same time, if someone's going to come in and give you a plan to correct something and you are going to choose not to follow it, well, I think that speaks for itself. I think that's why you have police officers without safety equipment, that's why you have firefighters without rubber gloves, it's why you have the kids at the swimming pool wondering when they're going to get paid and why there's gravel all over the streets. New council members, I've heard plenty of talk here, you know, the new council members, we're getting along, we're working through it. Guys, 25% of your term is over. No more time. At some point, you have to do something. You know, my grandmother, she passed last week, she was an interesting lady, tough lady. Her mother was the youngest of 26 children in Pell City, Alabama. You know, when she was a little girl, you ate the food you got because you didn't know it was coming back. You know, she always told me that the most important thing that you can control is right now. The future is a gift, the past is over, what are you doing now to correct these situations? Every member of council and every department head in this city has the power to propose Faceless ordinances, nameless ordinances from unspoken-up people that appear before meetings the day of the meeting that is not planning. Passing every ordinance as an emergency is not planning. You know, I'm challenging you all as public servants to remember the duty you have as public servants to uphold the public trust. You guys are great people, you'll figure it out, but it's past time to get at it.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next are Steve Harding and Dennis Brogan. Thank you. If you'll give us your names and address and then you'll have five minutes to address council.
I'm Steve Harding, 1619 Commerce Road, Springfield, Ohio. And Dennis will introduce himself here in a minute. But we are a provider of the police and fire protective equipment, uniforms and other things like that. We're here to ask when we are a vendor and when we're going to get paid. Since December of 2015, invoices are going back. Currently, the city owes us about $36,000 past due. We have families, we got to pay too as well. And if you guys couldn't afford to buy that product, we performed flawlessly, we showed up every day when we were asked to and we did what we were supposed to do. Now we're asking you guys to do your part and you haven't done that. And I don't think it's fair, so we're looking for answers when we're going to get paid. You know, I see your sign over here that someone's going to get fined if they don't pay their money, that's a joke to me. How are you going to enter into a contract when you can't pay your current bills? So, we're very frustrated. We have cut the city off, we will not ship anymore, we will not fix the product that's in our facility to fix. And from here going forward, the city will absolutely be prepaid or you guys will find another vendor. We have been flawless for you guys. And being a firefighter myself for 21 years, I get it. These four men and women over here in uniform are going to get, put the hurt on to them for it. So, both departments have been on notice that it's, we have cut them off and we will not ship anymore until then. We have property in the cities, we will not return the city's property until we get paid in full. So, I'm going to let Dennis speak later.
My core concern in listening to the presentation tonight is that no one ever approached us and said, "Hey, we must get this placed on order, but we need your help and cooperation because we're not going to be able to pay it in a timely fashion." You didn't set up a payment plan, you didn't set up any contingencies, you didn't give us parameters, you simply said, "We need to order this, it must be delivered, these are new hire employees, new hire police officers, new hire firefighters, you must deliver, Phoenix, or we're not going to be a vendor." There was no caveat, there was no what-if, there was no contingency. So, I understand and appreciate your description, but you are not being above board with your vendors and I therefore assume quite possibly your community if you're not giving us contingencies. We work with several thousand departments, we get those types of requests all the time. We can and will cooperate if we understand what those terms are. We were not given terms. The terms were considered and assumed to be the standard net 20 days that we've issued for the last five to seven years with your departments. So as far as compliance, I understand, I get that every penny matches, but the fact of the matter is, you're not giving us the complete truth.
Just one more thing here. Going back, the PDOs has past due, 12 past due invoices, $9,002. Department of Department owes us 24 past invoices at $26,307. So, a payment, a prompt payment in full would be great.
And that's the copy that you provided, you provided a copy of all those invoices.
So, can we look at you and ask you, you know, when you guys can think about paying us in full?
Mr. Stif, can you comment?
I can tell you one thing, which is a payment did go out for part of it, probably yesterday.
Okay.
When you heard me talking about the payments of trying to bring people up and we sent out a payment of, you know, $73,000 or so just this week and that we hope additional payments can be made, you are one of those vendors. You're on my sheet right here. I know every open PO for you. Now, that should have brought you up to 4416 and then, you know, and understand, my office would just write the check if we had the cash, but I don't make those decisions. We're hoping later this month that we're going to have that other money coming in and to pay the additional money, which will be another $73,000 to vendors to bring you up even closer to within 60 days. That won't be paid in full, but that's what we're trying to do now and then every month, whittling away at those bills. If finance committee wants to direct us to do something else, like not pay parts of payroll or not pay health insurance or other things to pay vendors back, I've been pressing for the idea that we need to pay vendors before we have to pay other things that have been standing out there because you're not the only ones.
I understand. Can you tell me what that check was for? Because we have not received it yet.
I can't, I don't know what it was. I mean, I'm not the one that wrote the check. I have the outstanding invoices right here, these are the ones I still owe you, if you subtract this from your total, that's the check that went out.
Well, we haven't received it yet, so prior to...
It was just yes.
Okay, I'm just saying, prior to this meeting, we have not received it. So, just so you know, on record to council, we are cutting police and fire off and we have already.
Yeah, that was my understanding along with other vendors. And, you know, my office, when you talk to them, you know, hopefully they're polite about it and we understand that you're doing this and I understand completely why you're doing it. And we hope that once we get caught up, that we can do business in the future, but I'm not the one that calls you and puts orders in on things, I'm not the one that tells you, "We need it right away." I'm the one that gets the invoice after everything's done and goes, "Well, what can we pay this month?"
Understand, so...
And so, you know, I'm hoping that we can work with you and like I said, there was a check that went out, I know it was cut yesterday, I don't know how much for, but I know I still owe you a lot.
Right. Well, with the 12 years of fiscal watch and everything else, once we get paid in full, we will all be on prepaid basis. So, thank you.
Thank you. If you'll give us your address and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Casey Brown, I live at 4425 Baslin Avenue. Sorry, I have to put these on now. I wanted to read to you a comment posted today on Facebook by someone I know personally. I asked this person for permission to share this here without me mentioning her name. She did say I could mention her personally and that she would be here if she did not work evenings out, but I won't mention her. She is 27, raised here in Norwood, participated in many arts events, in fact, I'm sure you've seen her and her siblings in these events. Her family is always involved in many volunteer events here in Norwood. She works in the healthcare industry, is college educated, happily engaged and becoming a stepmom in her near future. Just the kind of person who wants to be here with us here in Norwood. This young woman posted the following. "When the only thing positive coming out of Norwood lately is that a couple of celebrities stopped at Creamy Whip yesterday, you've got issues. This is essentially media trying to distract from the true problems that the city has that no one is bothering to fix. I want to be able to bring the kids to my hometown for visits and not be embarrassed by the cesspool it's quickly becoming. City council and citizens need to get their act together quick. We can very easily get the Norwood every member back if we can bring in more elected officials that A, actually give a blank about the city and not their own personal gain or reputation, and B, actually know how a budget works and how to appropriately manage it. Come on, people, wake the blank up and stop caring more about where Gwen Stefani and Blake Shelton get ice cream and less about the welfare of the city you live in." I cut out her curse words, but obviously she felt anger, frustration and was even heading to outrage. Someone commented that it was just a bit of fun to know about the celebrities' visit, Someone commented that it was just a bit of fun to know about the celebrities' visit, which she continues. "My point is, it was being plastered all over my Facebook wall, but I've seen more people give a blank about this fluff piece than they have about the issues with the police, fire, infrastructure, et cetera. I'm not trying to begrudge anyone their fun, but it's an unfortunate trait of our generation to focus more on what celebrities are doing than what's happening in our own backyard. I wanted to keep living in Norwood, but we didn't want to move the kids away from the school district that they're already established in here in where they live in Cincinnati. And honestly, her fiance saw the state that many of the neighborhoods are in and doesn't want to raise his kids in that. I don't blame him. There are so many aspects of Norwood that I love and want to bring the kids to see. But just walking through, for example, Linder Park recently and seeing how deplorable of condition the walking trail in the woods is, I can only imagine how much worse other areas of the city are becoming and will become. If more people aren't vocal about the real issues facing the city and put council's feet to the fire, then things will continue to decline, and I certainly don't want that for my family and friends that still live there." Okay, putting my soapbox away, smiley face. So, this young woman summed it up well, I believe. She's pointing out and asking why we want to continue like this. Good question, young woman. Good question. So, now I have my comments. I'm not sure why this has been allowed to happen, but let's stop now. Let's think about people who might be concerned that their property values are being affected by these financial issues. Let's think about people who pay their taxes and cannot afford more, feel as if they are seeing a downward trajectory that they are concerned about. Let's think about the young families like this young woman who want to live here and buy our houses and enjoy recreational facilities that are unfortunately non-existent. So, you're probably wondering about this bottle of gravel right here. So, I have a personal experience I want to share. Last year about this time, some repair work was done to the street on the corner by my house. It wasn't election year after all, and my corner's at the intersection of a polling place, and that's sarcasm, by the way. The repairs that were done were to spray down tar and to cover it with fine gravel. It looked better at first. And of course, public works was directed to do by the administration, but looks are deceiving and immediately resulted in the following conditions: gravel being dragged all throughout the neighborhood. And then, it loosened, and so right now it's in the gutters, which are now full of gravel. The tar was exposed and has stuck to anything, including shoes and cars. The gravel is in my car and my house. The tar is stuck on my car floor mats, the carpet in my house, wood floors, and many pairs of shoes. Needless to say, you can keep this so-called road repair. Again, this is a symptom of what is wrong here. The citizens suffer. It seems we're being conditioned to accept mediocrity so that we can never expect better. It doesn't have to be this way. You cannot take away my resolve for the city to do better. I will always expect the best of Norwood. We have to do better, and we're counting on the mayor and on council to do that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next is Kirsten James. Again, you'll have, if you'll address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kirsten James. I am a resident of Norwood. I reside at 1830 Hopkins Avenue. To put a little light on tonight, I know we're in a very tense moment now with the condition that the city is in, with the budget and everything, but I just wanted to, tonight, make an announcement that many of you have known myself and my family and my background working with young people. We are currently now, we have officially actually rolled out a program, a community initiative called Elevations. And Elevations is focusing again on our young people, providing character building, life skills training, and in overall enrichment. And so, I just wanted to announce that with you, these ladies here are working with me as well. And also, just wanted to let you know, we are partnering, I'm happy to inform you that we are also partnering with a longstanding Norwood nonprofit, which is the NSL Norwood Service League, Lupe Gonzalez Hoyt. And the Norwood Service League will be unveiling Elevations on our 501(c)(3) until we, as we continue to build and work on our 501(c)(3). So, I just wanted to give that positive note. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. And next is Lupe Hoyt.
Thank you. My name is Lupe Gonzalez Hoyt. My address is 4525 Floral Avenue. I'm a 24-year resident of Norwood, and my children graduated from the high school here. We have enjoyed our time here. I have been executive director of Norwood Service League for this year's 14 years. And as Kirsten mentioned, the elevation program is a program that we're going to sponsor and be part of. And we've always been involved with safety net services. And these services help people who are struggling economically due to health, job loss. And as you remember, 30-some-odd years ago, a lot of people lost jobs. And unfortunately, their children who had been looking forward to those jobs with major corporations were some of the people that we ended up helping financially, food, clothing, rent, whatever it might be. And our services help to improve the quality of life in Norwood as best as possible with the inclusion of helping them to learn new skills in order to sustain their homes. By helping people in our neighbors in need from falling through the cracks, we help to, them to be more self-sustaining. As we prepare for our 100th year next year, I don't feel that old, but 100 years of serving our neighbors. And I, you know, we work with anyone. We don't discriminate with race, age, anything. And so, I just want to encourage members in the audience, friends and neighbors, city council members, to continue your support, your encouragement. It is very hard work with some of the things that we've had to do. We've worked with people who were victims of crime. We've had families who had literally nothing, and it's very disheartening. But anyway, I just want to tell you lastly that I invito a todos, a unidos, a nosotros. And that's, I'm inviting everyone to join us with our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Next is Pastor Sonny James.
I am Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. You know, I try real hard to gain friends in my community because I truly love my community. I try really hard not to always come across as the bad guy. I try real hard to, you know, be friendly, invite you over for some barbecue ribs or a piece of chicken. But it comes a time when enough is enough. Now, yes, I know somebody will leave here tonight and say, "I told you he's a bad guy." I love my community. And as Mr. Stiff has said, yes, I do talk to everybody about everything. Listen, $11 million? Give me $1,000 and I can show you what we can do with it. I said to this council over eight months ago, "Listen, we have got to stand up and be bold enough to make some serious, serious changes." That means somebody's going to be hurt. Somebody's not going to get their lollipop just the way they want it. Somebody's not going to be able to spend the kind of money that they've been able to spend. Enough is enough! If we get residents taking their podium and throwing it out the window, you call the police. Oh, they're violent. They call them. They're already here. My son is 15 years old. He wants to be the chief of police one day in Norwood, Ohio. How in the world are you going to set my son up? He can't get police uniforms. He can't get equipment because you don't know how to budget. Risk your own children's life. Leave my family alone. If you can't help us, move out. Listen, folks, this is real simple. I'm bringing in financial experts that help other municipalities. Physical emergency, yes. Bankruptcy, I know it's hard to speak on. But when you can't pay $3,300, you're already bankrupt. Who are you fooling? Play with yourself. Don't play with me. Don't play with my community, and don't play with my people. Every time I try to step up and bring an initiative to this great community, I have people working against me. May 27th, we brought all nationalities together, over 350 people, and not one incident. Yet, when I send out an email saying, "We have a recreation building." I went in last week, you had three people playing basketball, a Hispanic mother and her two daughters. Yet, when I send out emails and say, "I have a plan. We can bring $20,000, and what we'll do is we'll take $5,000 of it and give it to the city." You have people sending me emails back saying, "Well, Pastor, we don't have a meeting set to discuss it." But when we do have our next meeting, it's already filled. And it's going to be a long meeting, so there's no room for your topic. Enough of the red tape. My wife and I promote professional boxing and MMA across the country. Let us bring these events in and profit share the money. We're broke. No, you're broke. If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. I'm not jumping on any of you, but when there's crime on the street, who do you see out there 2:00 in the morning? I have no badge. You don't pay me a dollar. If you will finally please, I've issued a 13-point plan that addresses the needs of our community and our people. Andrew Pluck came last Sunday. We brought in a police from another municipality and a group of residents. And at the end of it, he will tell you, "We need to bring our police and our council, and let me show you some of these things that work elsewhere." Why do you keep blocking out the people? They love you more than life itself. I know I'm over my five minutes. Call Obama or Trump, whoever you want to call. You don't follow process and protocol, but yet you want everybody else to. If you don't have groceries, I can take you to some single mothers right now. They'll flip that budget upside down for you and make your eyes spin. Will some people be upset? Yes. But I can guarantee to you, when we get through with this budget and show you if you will listen, I guarantee you, call me, 513-487-8843. My email, pastorsonyjames@gmail.com. That's S-O-N-N-Y. Come out from behind your cage. Show your face. You gotta show up first. But stop blocking me and others that want to do good for this city. Call me. Email me. Let's make this city great. I love Norwood, and over my dead body, I'm not going anywhere. I will outlast you all. Now, please, I beg of you, if Lemuel James were here right now, I'd be in tears, and I'd be saying, "Son, I'm so sorry. Forgive me, baby. I have been so foolish. I've been running around with knuckleheads trying to treat the wrong people to Chipotle." Residents that are listening, call me. You want to get it done, let's do it. You think this council member, this chamber is empty? I'll have the walls bulging with citizens saying, "Enough's enough." If he can bring some money, you want the money? You want the money? Stop cutting out people just because they don't look like you, act like you, sound like you, walk like you. Thank God for each and every one of you. I appreciate the president and council allowing me time to speak. Please, call me. This stuff works. Don't worry about insurance. We got all the insurance in the world. Don't worry about a bond. We got all the bonds in the world. If we can promote a professional boxing show and bring in people from all over the country, I think that little bitty old building on Carter Avenue, release the building and let us use it. How are you going to strangle, hold our fire and police because of something somebody did a long time ago? They didn't budget right then, but we're not doing it now. You gotta cut some people out, and even if it's those departments that are spending too much on overtime, you gotta sit them down, take them to McDonald's, take them to Chipotle, feed them something. Say, "Listen, you just spent too much here. We're going to have to cut that out, but now, we're not going to risk your safety." Because I'm telling you, when these robberies are happening, I'm on the street. I don't have a vest. But when my son comes up, he should better have one. That's all I got to say. Peace out. And I'm for real.
Annie Cummins, I'm so sorry that you are next that you have to follow that. I don't know how you're going to do it.
The sweetest thing in the room.
I know. I was sitting up there. I'm like, I'm going to have to follow that.
I apologize for that.
Hi, my name is, is this thing, can you guys hear me up here?
No, if you can take it out of the.
Take it out.
Yeah. There you go.
All right. Can you hear me better?
A little better, yeah.
My name's Annie Cummins, formerly Wilkerson. I may have met some of you. I am the field representative for Congressman Brad Wenstrup, so I'm not here about all of this other stuff. But we are hosting a Coffee with Your Congressman this Thursday at the Bluebird Restaurant down the street here. I have flyers that I'll leave in the back of the room. It's from 8:30 to 9:30. Oh, sorry. It all worked up after that. And basically, the format is the congressman will go table-to-table and chat with folks. He just likes to have that more intimate conversation with people. And then, also, I just wanted to let you guys know of some of the services our office provides on the local level in the constituent services offices located in Anderson and Peebles. If anyone ever has an issue with the VA, whether that's claims, getting your records, getting medals that are owed to you, we can help with those sorts of things. Any other agencies, I know the IRS is a little difficult to get in touch with, so if you ever have troubles there, we can assist. Also, social security, Medicare, passport expeditions, we can do those as well. Another thing that we have going on right now is we are accepting applications for nominations to the military service academies. I handle that process in the office, so if you know of any bright, young high school students that are interested, even if they're not seniors and send them my way, I'll leave some of my cards as well as our flyers back there. And then, if you have any legislative concerns, our district office doesn't really field those, but we will take the concerns and pass them on to the legislative team, and then they will contact you with a response to your concerns. So, thank you for having me. I just wanted to take a few minutes and say thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Doug Clark. And if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Doug Clark, and I live at 3926 Grove Avenue in Norwood. I love Norwood. I'm here today to invite everyone here and everybody watching to the upcoming Hot Wheels Summer Nationals to be held Saturday, August 20th at Trinity Pentecostal Church at 2719 Norwood Avenue. The race itself will start at 1, but registration will begin at noon. This fundraiser is for BLAST Ministries, which is our children's program at Trinity. The cost is $5, which allows you to purchase a new Hot Wheels car from over 300 car selections. No outside cars will be allowed. You will also. You will also receive lunch and an entry into the race. Up to three vehicles can be purchased by any one person. We will have two divisions, adults and a kids division. The winner of each division will receive a fifty-dollar gift certificate. Then the final race of the day will have those two winners competing for the grand champion. They will receive a four-to-five-foot trophy. Along with these prizes, everyone will have the opportunity to win door prizes throughout the day. We have over fifty-two at last count we're giving away. A few people plan to bring, we got an old nineteen-sixty-four front-engine dragster that still races today, but it was real big back in nineteen-sixty-four. So it'll be setting out for the kids. I got a couple more older cars that's gonna be there, so. We're hoping everyone will come and enjoy a great time away from the iPhones, the iPads, et cetera. Any questions, you can reach me at three-eight-two-oh-eight-five-four, or see me afterwards. And I have these little handouts that explains everything that's going on, if anybody. But way back when we played with the Hot Wheels, and what we're trying to do is get families together in Norwood. Kids just don't look up anymore. They're on their phones, and we're trying to get them off their phones, trying to keep them out of that and to have a great time of racing, waiting for each other, against each other, whatever it is. So, I just want to thank you for the time you give me. And I don't see how you guys do it. Please?
Can you repeat the date and the time?
Oh, it's, um, I don't wanna... August twentieth. Registration starts at noon, and the race starts at one. And we're gonna give away prizes all day long. If you buy a car, you're in the drowling. We're gonna put all the names up on the wall, and they can watch their names as they keep winning. You can buy up to three, and we'll put you in each, you know, where you're not racing against yourselves, so. It's gonna be a great time. I've already sold probably sixty cars. We're trying to sell them before the day, so it kind of eases up, because me and my wife had premiere night for six or seven years in a row, and they lined up around the building, so we don't want that to happen again. So we're trying to sell them before the day, so we sold up fifty or sixty of them already, so. So there's gonna be adult side, and the funnest part of it has been when the adult raises a kid for the real big trophy. I like big trophies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Before we move on, I just want to say thank you to those of you who are in attendance. This was some very hot topics tonight, and you were very respectful, and I just want to acknowledge that, so. Thank you very much. We'll move on then to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Hi, I'd like to, uh, I'm gonna be going to executive session to discuss contracts.
Is there a second? So the motion on the floor is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing employee contracts? Is there any discussion about that? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Senker?
Yes.
All members present voting either motion carries. What that means is that we will be discussing employee contracts, so we'll need to shut off the cameras, empty the room. We will come back into regular session after the executive session is completed. We're only permitted to discuss employee contracts. Thank you. If you can turn off the cameras and the sound, please.
All right, we are back in regular session. Thank you for your patience. We are under unfinished business. Is there any other unfinished business?
I just want to remind everyone, Hope Over Heroin is coming up, August 26th and 27th. That's a Friday and Saturday. We're still looking for volunteers and money, if anyone would like to make a donation. But we have close to ten different organizations that will be coming in to provide information to those who are looking to get off of heroin or any other addiction. So we would appreciate your prayers and if anyone would like to volunteer, please let me know.
That's at Nora Plaza.
The Nora Plaza.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. So just to follow up on Councilmember Clark's item, Hope Over Heroin. I mean, I think they can also, can you go to hopeoverheroin.com or is there some kind of a place they can go, do you think?
Yeah, you can donate money there. If you want to sign up, though, to volunteer, you can go to our Facebook page, which is Hope Over Heroin Norwood. And you can sign up there or let myself or Nathan at what is the organizer of our event, let him know.
Thank you. Mr. Bonsell?
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. So just to follow up on Councilmember Clark's, I guess, item, Hope Over Heroin. I mean, I think they can also, can you go to hopeoverheroin.com or is there some kind of a place they can go, do you think?
Yeah, you can donate money there. If you want to sign up, though, to volunteer, you can go to our Facebook page, which is Hope Over Heroin Norwood. And you can sign up there or let myself or Nathan at what is the organizer of our event, let him know.
Thank you. Mr. Sankar?
A follow up from Mr. Clark. Isn't there too an account at Fifth Third that you can donate for that?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Yeah, there is an account set up with any Fifth Third bank that you can go in and make a donation and that would come directly to Hope Over Heroin. Thank you, Mr. Sankar.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Bonsell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to be hosting some neighborhood cleanup days in each of the four wards on the following days and locations from ten AM to noon each of those Saturdays. So Ward One is going to be held this Saturday at August 13th. We're going to start at Victory Park. Ward Two is going to be held on Saturday, August 27th, starting at Williams Avenue Community Gardens. And that's going to kind of be held in conjunction with the Norwood Farmers Market. They've been extremely supportive. Ward Three is going to be held on Saturday, September 24th. We're going to start from Doral Field. Ward Four is going to be held on Saturday, September 10th, and we're going to start from Hunter Park. Again, we'll meet from ten AM to noon on those days. We'll have gloves, gloves, water and trash bags will be provided. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are you working with on this?
Basically myself. I just.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was a group or.
No, any group that wants anybody.
All right, we are back in regular session. Thank you for your patience. We are under unfinished business. Is there any other unfinished business? Hearing none. Is there any new business? Mr. Clark?
Just want to remind everyone, Hope Over Heroin is coming up, August 26th and 27th. That's a Friday and Saturday. We're still looking for volunteers and money. If anyone would like to make a donation. But we have close to 10 different organizations that will be coming in to provide information to those who are looking to get off of heroin or any other addiction. So we would appreciate your prayers and if anyone would like to volunteer, please let me know.
That's at?
The Norwood Plaza, behind Captain D's.
Thank you. Mr. Poncel?
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam President. So just to follow up on Councilmember Clark's, I guess, item, Hope Over Heroin. I mean, I think they can also, can you go to hopeoverheroin.com or is there some kind of a place they can go, do you think?
Yeah, you can donate money there. If you want to sign up, though, to like volunteer, you can go to our Facebook page, which is Hope Over Heroin Norwood, and you can sign up there or let myself or Nathan at what is the organizer of our event, let him know.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sankar?
Follow up from Mr. Clark. Isn't there too an account at Fifth Third that you can donate for that?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Yeah, there is an account set up with any Fifth Third bank that you can go in and make a donation and that would come directly to Hope Over Heroin Norwood. Thank you, Mr. Sankar.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Poncel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I'm going to be hosting some neighborhood cleanup days in each of the four wards on the following days and locations from 10:00 a.m. to noon each of those Saturdays. So Ward One is going to be held this Saturday at August 13th. We're going to start at Victory Park. Ward Two is going to be held on Saturday, August 27th, starting at Williams Avenue Community Gardens. And that's going to kind of be held in conjunction with the Norwood Farmers Market. They've been extremely supportive. Ward Three is going to be held on Saturday, September 24th. We're going to start from Dorrell Field. Ward Four is going to be held on Saturday, September 10th, and we're going to start from Hunter Park. Again, we'll meet from 10:00 a.m. to noon on those days. We'll have gloves, gloves, water, and trash bags going to be provided. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who are you working with on this?
Basically myself. I just?
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was a group or?
No, any group that wants, anybody that wants to like help out or, you know, kind of join in, just reach out to me. Like, I'm sure I can find, we can find some stuff to do to work together and get that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Poncel.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Yes, Mr. Poncel?
Yeah, so I just kind of want to air something that's been out in the community. The Norwood Police Department recently made a stop of a vehicle on I-71, I think it was Friday night. The operator of the vehicle was passed out with an un-capped needle in her lap and had other drug paraphernalia, I guess, you know, nearby with her. And so this operator of this vehicle is the director of the area needle exchange. And she had, you know, she had over a thousand, I've heard, capped needles in safety storage containers. But in the media, she tried to, she, well, she did justify her arrest by saying that she was arrested based on the needles that were in the, you know, in the program. There were quotes from the medical director of the needle exchange saying that, quote, "She should not have been arrested." This program is perfectly legal and other, said other things as well. But it turns out that, you know, we weren't told the whole story, I guess, in the media. And, you know, it was, it has been updated since then. But our officers all wear body cameras and the police department provided over three hours of body cam footage to the Inquirer. They posted a 20-minute clip of it on their website and I watched the 20 minutes a couple of days ago. And I've got to tell you that I could not have been more impressed with the performance of our police department and those police officers that were on scene. I mean, they did everything they could to make sure that the situation was de-escalated, that there was, everybody was remaining calm. The paramedics, you know, showed up and every, you know, just a team effort to make sure that, you know, everybody just got out of there safely. And, you know, it was just extremely impressive. And furthermore, something came out today where the medical director of that program is suspending the program until they get marked vehicles. She was actually in a personal vehicle because the vehicle they were in is broken down. And so they sent out a press release saying they're going to suspend the program until they get marked vehicles because of this incident. And this incident was not because there was anything had to do with the needles, the capped needles in the program. The incident was because this person was passed out, by the way, the car was in drive, passed out in drive on the side of I-71, the left-hand median, our left. And so for me, it was extremely offensive to have Norwood's name, I guess, drugged through the mud and also to have our police department's name. And I just want to, you know, make sure that, you know, any citizens listening that, you know, we have a great police department. And I mean, I just can tell you that if they had a training video on this, you know, a national training video on how to handle this situation, this officer, and I don't know who it was, I know Officer Price was there, but I don't know who this officer was. I mean, they should be given a medal. So it's extremely impressive. I'm very proud of them. And I just want to make sure our citizens know that as well. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Hammerhand?
I follow James. Talk about the police department and with the Sherman Avenue, Sherman Market being closed down. I know there was a lot of bad press. I didn't see it all. I was on vacation. But I know what did not come out of the news, and that's when our officers were trying to find housing for these people. There were officers who were offering to put hotel rooms on their credit cards to help people, these people in need. And that stuff just doesn't come out in the news either, only that they got stuff. So I think that was really wonderful, the officers who offered to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammerhand. Any other new business? Mr. Poncel?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Hammerhand's message there. And, you know, another thing about that is that I don't think our police department, from what I've been told, is that they were not aware that the prosecutor's office was going to shut down, not just the market, but the apartments as well. I mean, that came as a surprise to them. And so, you know, I don't think that the police department probably even fully understands exactly why they chose to do all of it. I mean, maybe there was some other issues. I don't know. I just know they weren't, they weren't communicated to me. But, you know, it's extreme, those people are still locked out, or they might not be now, but at least as of yesterday, those people are still locked out of their apartments. All of their stuff is in there and they cannot get into their apartment to get their stuff out. And so, I mean, it's extremely sad, you know, that happening, especially them not being able to get their stuff. I don't exactly know what's going on with that. But, you know, I express regret that that is happening to those people and I do hope that they're getting the help they need. And I'm glad that our police department was working hard to try to find someplace for them that night.
Yeah, this was not our police department's decision that those people leave.
Thank you. Any other new business? I got a nice surprise tonight when I came and opened up the mail that was on my desk. As you know, the last couple of years, we've, a group of folks have been working on safe routes to school. And last year, we were awarded a very large grant, almost $400,000. And we did apply again for the 2016-17 school year. And we were, I just got a notice of award that we will be awarded a maximum of $392,597 that we can use on the infrastructure projects that were identified in the school safety travel plan. So it says this is a notice of funding award, but not a notice to proceed. So it's the promise, but we don't have the, we never really have the money. The state has the money, but we can address those projects that were identified. So I'm sure Deb Robinson and the schools will be very happy about that. So I just literally got this tonight and wanted to share this with you all. And one other thing, I found out that there was a Norwood native who is playing in the Olympics. Max Holt, who grew up, his mother lives on Cluny Avenue, made the men's Olympic volleyball team. Unfortunately, they lost three games to Canada and I think they just, they lost, I think they were three and one against Italy today. I watched it this afternoon. So I don't think they're in the medal contention anymore. But he did, Max did go to school at Nativity and at Purcell Marion. And then his mother told me that he went to Penn State on a scholarship. And then has made, didn't make the Olympics four years ago, but did make it this year. But he did play on the world team where the United States apparently medaled in 2015. So they really had hopes to win a medal. But I really, I told the mom that we would probably really like to honor him with a resolution. She's in Rio now, so she's not available for this meeting. But I will ask the law department to do a resolution in Max's honor and invite his mother to come at the next meeting. So that's pretty exciting to have. And I have, there's a newspaper article that I'll have all the information for you, Mr. Moore. Yes, Mr. Poncel?
Yeah, is there any, I mean, is there like some logistics that might prevent Max from actually being able to be here, do you think? Is he like?
That's interesting. His mother told me that he, there are no professional teams in the United States. And so he's been playing for Italy, interestingly enough, who beat them today. He'd been playing for Italy for about three years and then was traded to Russia. And he had been playing for Russia for a couple of years. And now after the Olympics, they all signed new contracts and he's going back to Italy. So my guess is, no, he will not be here. He will be playing throughout Europe.
Wow, what a start. Thank you.
Very exciting, though. She was a very nice lady. She actually came in to get a yard sale permit and talked to Jane Grody and was telling her about it. And that's how, how we found out about it. And then there was a nice article in the newspaper, so. Any other new business? All right, move on to communications. The first is a letter from Jim Stith Auditor regarding Police Department Appropriations, 2016.
Dear Councilmembers, as we review the appropriations for the Police Department materials and supplies key 01-832-7300, in attempt to prepare for purchasing new citation forms, it has been noted that there are currently sufficient appropriations available for this purchase. The general fund police materials and supplies key has an unencumbered balance of $19,253.30, which is more than sufficient to cover the $4,500 estimated printing cost. No purchase order has been requested for printing of citations. If a P.O. is requested by the police department, it can be approved and the items then be ordered, but first they must request the P.O. It should also be noted that the Police Department key with a balance of $19,253.30 has had adequate appropriations available to purchase protective vests, but a P.O. was not requested. Given that there has been sufficient appropriations available in the police department budget to purchase these supplies, but they have, but they have not submitted a P.O. request for approval, the controversy surrounding this subject seems ill-placed. Please review the attached document, which displays the current year appropriations, expenditures, encumbrances, and remaining balances available for purchases for this Police Department key. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor, City of Norwood.
It's your pleasure. Mr. Sankar?
Recommend that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Mr. Poncel?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I guess reading this letter and now seeing everything that's happened since July 21st, it's kind of funny. Or not really. But, you know, there's a specific quote in here that says that the controversy surrounding this subject seems ill-placed. But even when we got this letter on the 21st, you know, I just want to make it noted that we couldn't actually order the vests until August 1st because we still owed money to that vendor. And that vendor was telling us that if, you know, we have a $15,000, whatever dollar limit, that these vests would have, you know, been that entire limit. So we need to go down to zero in the account until, before we can actually, you know, buy, I guess, well, order the vests, if you will. So, I mean, you know, yes, would have been nice if we would have known earlier, sure. But it's still, we couldn't actually place the order at the time the letter came out because that vendor needed, you know, wanted their money back. So, you know, it says controversy surrounding the subject seems ill-placed. I mean, there definitely still needed to be a discussion on this because we wouldn't have been able to order it anyways. And lastly, you know, just want to make notice for everybody at home that the police vests are ordered. They're on order. We, I delivered the check myself down to the, I guess, the vendor down outside of downtown so that we could get it on day one, on August 1st, they could get that order in instead of putting it in the mail and it taking three, four, or five days. So anyways, just want to make sure it's known that the vests are ordered. The controversy probably wasn't ill-placed, but, you know, I appreciate the auditor bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion on the floors to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Poncel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of July 2016. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mrs. Hammerhand? Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Poncel?
Thank you, Madam President. So this one as well, I mean, this brings up an issue that we're having that we are limited on these citation forms that the police department has. And so, you know, from what I've been told, there are certain police, you know, not everybody even has these forms and that they're using them somewhat sparingly. So, you know, maybe some of the, they're not always being used to issue citations at the times that they should be used to issue citations, from what I've been told. So that being said, that's going to hit us in the pocketbook at the, you know, with mayor's court. And so it's very likely that's going to hit us more than just the cost to buy these things anyways by not having them to issue. So, yeah, I sent an email to the chief this week. I've been talking to him about it. We've got to figure out a way to make this happen. I mean, I don't know what it is, but we've got to get these things ordered. Because honestly, that, I mean, truly, this is going to cost us more money this year than it's, you know, the cost to buy them. And these things are going to last us many more years anyway. So we've, we've got to get it done. We cannot keep waiting. So I just want to make sure that that is known. And we're going to keep seeing, when we get these mayor's court fines every month, we're going to keep seeing less and less and less coming from them. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
So any other discussion? Motion on the floors to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Poncel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have one absent member. Mrs. Stickley?
I move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Poncel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Mupper is not here to ask for adjournment. Mr. Blair?
A motion that we adjourn?
Seconded by Mrs. Hammerhand. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Poncel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hammerhand?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.